Thank you for joining us this evening for the annual reorganization meeting, January 3rd, 2024, 5:00 PM. I will be your chairperson to begin our evening. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the physical world, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera, The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Violin, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, I would like to invite Mayor Finucci to assist with the swearing-in of our new members. We will begin with Mr. Robert Bono.
Good evening Superintendent Yano, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for having me here this evening to do the swearing-in of our board members. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Robert Bono Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Robert Bono Jr.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
A member of the Board of Education.
A member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're gonna sign right here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's make sure we got everything we're having.
You'll join us now.
I would say you're gonna come up and take your seat. Yes, sir. Mr. Holmes. Cedric, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cedric Holmes.
I, Cedric Holmes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Cedric Holmes.
I, Cedric Holmes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications prescribed.
Qualifications prescribed.
By law.
By law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
A member of the Board of Education.
A member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
That office.
That office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations Cedric. Welcome back. Cedric, sign here. Don't run away yet. We got him. Thank you. All right, brother. Go ahead. Mr. Medio. I do want you to take special note of how handsome Mr. Medio looks this evening in his tie and handkerchief.
Debonair.
That's, yes, more like it.
When you say, "Do I swear?" You want me to say no, but I know all the words.
Yes, I do. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Yeah, here, I'll hold it for you. Cedric, okay? Will you use this? I, state your name.
I, Eugene Medio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Eugene Medio.
I, Eugene Medio.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
A member of the Board of Education.
A member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations Eugene.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. May I take your seat. Senior Rivera, thanaka. Dennis, if your family would like to come up with you, please. All right, you're ready to go. I love it. You may hold that for Dennis. Hi, Raquel. That's right, mom. Straighten him out. Dennis, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Dennis Rivera.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of.
The State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Dennis Rivera.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
A member of.
A member of.
The Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations Dennis. And may I please have your signature right here? Beautiful.
Thank you, sir.
Take your seat, brother. Cedric, would you give this to your mom?
Thank you Mayor Finucci for your assistance this evening. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Bono.
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Medio.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask Mr. DeSanto to explain the nomination and voting process.
Thank you, Mr. Yano. Mr. Yano, as temporary chair, will request nominations for the office of Board President. The nomination is made by a member of the seated board. No second is necessary. Once all the nominations are in, one or more, Mr. Yano will declare the nominations closed and ask Mr. Mustarel for a roll call vote. The same process will be repeated for the office of Board Vice President, except that the Board President will assume the chair and preside over that vote. Again, no second is necessary.
Thank you. At this time, are there any nominations for Board President?
Superintendent Yano, I nominate Kim Cottis Patti for Board President.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Seeing none. Nominations are closed. Mr. Mustarel, roll call, please.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Bono.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
But unanimous.
Do I have a nomination for Vice President?
I nominate Cedric Holmes for Vice President.
Do I have any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Call Mr. Mustarel, please.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Bono.
No.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Yes.
Eight, one. Motion carries.
We have public comment on agenda items or any other matter. Please limit yourself to three minutes. Do we have anyone that wants to make a comment? Recommendations by the superintendent?
Yes, there are two recommendations. Readoption of bylaws and policies, and B, acceptance of the 2023 annual school election results. Question.
Questions or comments? Seeing none?
Motion?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Bono.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes, on all but 57, 56, 91, 50, and 01, 45, I believe it is.
Just to clarify, 57?
57, 56 transgender student policy.
You're abstaining on both of these?
No, I'm voting no.
Voting no. Thank you. And 045 was the second one?
142.
145, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana.
Yes, to all, except the three that Mr. Medio mentioned.
There was two, I believe, Mr. Medio, correct?
57, 56, and was it 145? 01, 45.
91, 50, okay. Thank you. Mr. Silva.
No to 57, 56, and yes to all.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Note of 57, 56, yes to the rest.
Motion carries.
Scott.
Yes.
Um, am I allowed to rewind the clock a little bit? I didn't realize that this time we were going, I thought the next meeting was for, to bring up the policies that we don't agree with. Sorry.
A board member may change his or her vote during the meeting, so if you wanted to change your vote as to any one of the policies, you could do so.
I agree with, um, no to 57, 56 as well.
Change your name.
Yes, sir.
57, 56 does not carry. The rest of them do. One, two, three, four, five. The vote on 57, 56 is four to five. Rest carry.
We're gonna start with board member comments. We're gonna start with Mr. Fiocchi.
Good evening. I just would like to welcome Mr. Bono. I'd like to welcome back Mr. Medio, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes, congratulations, and Ms. Cottis Patti, congratulations as well. Looking forward to a interesting year. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to Mr. Medio, Mr. Bono, Mr. Holmes, and Mr. Rivera. Congratulations to Ms. Cottis Patti and Mr. Holmes on your positions. I look forward to working with everyone and hope we have a very productive and happy new year. Thank you.
Mr. Medio.
First thing I'd like to do is thank the voters out there who saw fit to elect me to this board. I had a lot of interaction with a lot of people, and I intend to take a course that seems to be what the majority of Violin wants. Uh, the first thing that I thought was a problem in Violin that they want to address is the discipline or lack thereof at the high school. I spoke to several people, and I'm passing out at this time a discipline code that was successful in the past. Any board members have any questions? Superintendent has any questions? I'll be available all week, and hopefully I'd like to bring it up next week. We have to do something about the high school problems as soon as we can. Beyond that, I don't have much to say. We'll see what happens and take things as they come. I guess one other thing that I should say is, if it comes up that we have credible messengers or any other such group in the high school, I'll be voting no on that. If there's a pastor, a reverend, a rabbi, or a priest in Violin that wants to put a program like that together to help students, that's where I think it belongs, in a church, a synagogue, not at the high school. If we're gonna have models for our students, they should be successful people in the community. Thank you.
Mr. Bono.
Good evening. Um, just, just to clarify on a few things, um, in regards to the vote no for Vice President Cedric, Mr. Cedric Holmes and I, he contacted me the other day with his interest in running for the vice presidency. We had a lengthy professional conversation about my decision and why I don't support it. Um, just, I support it at this time, you know? Um, however, with this being said, I do look forward to getting to know you better and working with you on the school board. Okay? Um, and for, for the remarks of just thanking everybody, um, first of all, I'd like to thank my family, my wife Holly, my three children, um, and coworkers, employees that supported me throughout, you know, the, the election process. Um, a special thanks to all those people that offered me a little piece of their real estate to posting yard signs for the campaign. Life's lesson there, posting signs with my daughter. She's a, a new driver. Um, and it was an educational driving lesson, in my opinion, but we had a lot of fun. And I had a lot of interesting conversations with, with neighbors, with, um, Violin residents, all about their experiences and stories about Violin education system. So it was a, it was an eye-opening experience for me, um, during the whole campaign. It was a lot of fun. Um, I'd like to thank all those that came out to vote on November 7th, whether they voted by mail in or at the polls. You are appreciated. Um, it takes a lot to come out and vote, and you are appreciated. So without your support, none of us would be here. So thank you. I'd like to also thank all those that served before me on this board. A special thank you for your service and time given to the Violin Public Schools and our community. Uh, when, when I think about my educational experience here in Violin, first through 12th grade graduation, um, people often say, or ask me, you know, if, if, if I get cut open, I bleed red and gray. I'm a true product of the environment of the Violin Public Schools. And I had a, an interesting, um, um, career within Violin, but it was filled with a lot of love, a lot of patience, um, by my parents, by my educators, administrators, and all, all the staff. Takes a total team effort, um, to put into our school system, and I believe in that. Um, one person can't do it alone, from the top down. Um, and like Medio, uh, Mr. Medio just explained on some of the, the problems that he, that we're hearing on the street, um, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to run for the school board, to see if I could help lend a hand and, and be a positive role model, shedding positive light on Violin's school system. And a lot of the good things that come out of Violin Public Schools, not all the negative that we like to often, you know, not, not like to hear, but, um, I wanna shed on the positives. Okay? Um, and again, thank you, um, for the support. I just, I wanna promise to advocate for our students, our educators, and our administration. If there's any problems, concerns, please do not be afraid to come to that podium and let us know. Um, in my type of business, it's called constructive criticism, okay? If I don't know that there's a problem, I can't fix it. So I encourage students, teachers, principals, whoever, to come and voice your concerns, your problems, so that we can fix them together. All right? And, uh, just a few acknowledgements. I just wanna thank Superintendent Yano and all the people that took part in honoring the Harvard family. Um, it was, I attended the renaming of our gym, uh, to the new name of Edward T. Harvard Gymnasium, and I thought they did a fantastic job, um, everyone involved. What an amazing tribute it was for a great person, who I knew, I knew pretty well, from my times at CYO Basketball, when he taught me how to dribble, because he called me for a travel, as he was my referee, okay? All the way to the high school as my vice principal, okay? And I, I visited him every once in a while in, in his office. Um, but he was always a positive role model in my life. I also like to congratulate Mr. Vince Luciano on his recent Tennis Coach of the Year Award, and the fantastic job that hi, his team, um, had this season, when their championship season. And lastly, I'd like to, um, congratulate Coach Elliot DeSeals, who was a former football coach for me, but this time it goes to the track. His dedication to Violin Public Schools has been phenomenal over the years, and it is appreciated. Uh, his, uh, his VHS Girls 4x800, I believe they took first place in this last big meet, and I just wanted to congratulate him. So, thanks again, and I look forward to serving the community and this board.
Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Mrs. Cottis Patti, on being elected as president. Mr. Holmes, congratulations, being elected vice president. I'd like to thank Mayor Finucci for being here and administering the oath tonight. Uh, three years ago, with great honor and humility, I took place at this table to serve our great city, and most importantly, the children of our public schools. Three years ago, I spoke about what serving on this board would mean to me, and that every day would be a job interview. And once again, I am humbled that the voters of Violin have entrusted me with this privilege. My commitment remains the same, to serve with integrity, humility, and with the love I have for our kids. To my family, church family, and friends, and friends who are family, some of whom who are here today. Thank you for your unwavering support throughout this campaign. Thank you for every call, text, post, share, and like. Thank you for your words of encouragement, especially when doubt would try to creep in. To lose, Vasquez. We attended events. She would text me, letting me know when events were occurring, and we even became amateur radio DJs, as many times as we were on the radio this campaign season. Thank you for investing in me, Luz. To all, thank you for believing in me, and as I said three years ago, I will not let you down. To my fellow board members, past and present, thank you for letting me learn from you these last three years. Your wealth of knowledge has helped me serve to the best of my ability, and for that, I am grateful. To the new and returning board members, I look forward to working with you. Feel free to seek my counsel and advice as I did when I first arrived. We are a team, and we will only succeed as a team. To Mr. Yano and the central administration team, you have my commitment once again, that I will serve with the best interests of our kids. They come first, and they will always come first. I look forward- I look forward to the many successes we will accomplish. To the entire school district, it has been one of the joys of my life entering our schools and witnessing the amazing job every principal, teacher, and staff member does. I would put violent public schools against any other school district. That is why I believe we are the best school district in New Jersey. Gracias por su apoyo. Es un orgullo poder representarle a ustedes en esta junta. Reconozco la responsabilidad que tengo. Reconozco que muchos de ustedes no tuvieron la oportunidad de obtener una educación formal. Muchos han hecho sacrificios para que sus hijos y hijas tengan esa oportunidad, y yo pelearé por sus hijos para que ellos tengan la misma oportunidad de cada otro niño. Para que ellos puedan también lograr sus sueños. To my mom, thank you for giving birth to me. Thank you for instilling in me the work ethic, drive, and determination that pushes me to this day. Thank you for your many sacrifices. You made it along the way with dad, so that we can progress in life and achieve our goals. There is no me without you. I love you, Mom. There are two people who are not here today that would be if they were still with us. To my dad, who is the standard I try to live up to every day. And my brother Nick, I miss you both very much. Nick was one of my biggest cheerleaders and supporters. I hope that if you look down and can see past the shining sun off my head, I hope that the words that come out of your mouth are, "I'm proud of you, son. I am proud of you, little bro." To my wife Debbie, thank you for being my rock and my constant support. It said every, every man, behind every man, there's a great woman, but in my case, she's not behind me, she's right next to me. I love you, I would not be here without you. To my boys Max and Miles, three years ago, you were anxious about when was all this gonna be over, and I'm pretty sure you're still feeling the same way. But I want to let you know that Papi does this for you. Today marks another milestone in our family's legacy. I do this so that you can envision yourselves accomplishing far greater things than me, and that's proof that if you want something, you can attain it, if you're willing to work hard for it. I love you two very much. And lastly, and above all things, I want to give all glory and honor to God, the center of my life. My hope is that everything I do is pleasing before Him, and all that I am and all that I will ever hope to be is because of Him. I will end with some lyrics, the song "Goodness of God." In all my life, I have, you have been faithful. And all my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, oh, I will sing of the goodness of God. Thank you, and have a good night.
Mr. Sabrana?
It's always difficult following Dennis.
Mr. Bono, welcome to the board, looking forward to working with you. Mr. Holmes, welcome back, congratulations on ascending to vice presidency. Dennis, as always, my seatmate, glad to have you here, despite your speeches being so emotional and making it difficult to make a, an appearance. Also, Mr. Medio, it proves that, uh, you can come home again, I guess, um, and, um, looking forward to working with you too, as always. Mrs. Cottisbody? My brother was a pilot, and he said, you know, you can watch somebody fly a plane, and you can help somebody fly a plane, but when you're sitting in that seat at the controls, you're flying the plane. So let's see how it goes. Um, I'm here to help any way I can. I'll give the rest of my time to someone else.
Mr. Silva?
Uh, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bono, welcome. Uh, Mr. Medio, welcome back. Mr. Holmes, congratulations on being vice president. Ms. Cottisbody, looking forward to working with you, congratulations. Mr. Holmes, I mean, not Mr. Holmes, sorry, Mr. Rivera, I don't know how I can ever follow after your speeches, but I'd like to congratulate you and welcome you back, and I love working with you, with everyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out, uh, first giving honor to God. I wanted to thank my family who's here, most of them you have never met before, my grandfather, my grandmom, uncle and aunt are here, cousins, uh, well, mom also, brother, grandmom, uh, my friends are here, my pastor's here, uh, Pastor Morgan, Birchton Board of Education, where all our money is, Scott. Uh, so I wanna thank everyone that's here tonight, uh, it's a great night. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Rivera, uh, you always give a heartfelt, uh, remarks. There are some Baptist people in here that wanted to run around when you were reciting "Goodness of God." Uh, but thank you, I look forward to working with all of you and looking forward to a great year. We're moving forward, and that's all that counts. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I wanna welcome Mr. Medio and Mr. Bono to the team. Uh, we are looking forward to working and collaborating and developing partnerships as we move the programs forward. Ms. Cottisbody, Mr. Holmes, president, vice president, congratulations. Mr. Rivera, welcome back, and we always are excited when you speak. I wanted to ask a question for clarification, so back to business. Policy 57, 56 was voted down. Mr. DeSanto, when a policy is mandated, the content can be revised and changed through a policy and personnel committee. So what are the next steps for policy that is considered a required policy by state statute, but we just voted it down tonight? So is there a timeline? Can you clarify the process?
No, the, the only timeline is to address it as soon as possible. I believe after this evening, Mrs. Cottisbody will be appointing a policy and personnel committee. Uh, the chair of that committee should recognize what occurred tonight and place that on the agenda for the first meeting of that committee in an expedited way.
Thank you, so although it was voted down tonight, there will be a process?
There could be revisions that make it possible to have enough support, but that remains to be seen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I received, uh, like, a copy of the policies that were vote, that were some, received some no votes. 57, 56 is clear. Policy 0145, which was voted into the record and voted against by a few board members, that's board member resignation and removal. But in my hand, I have 0146, which is board member authority. I wanted to clarify if the no votes were for 0145, board member resignation and removal, or was it 0146, board member authority? Is it 46 or 45? Because 45 is what is, has been recorded. Mr. Medio?
146, then.
Okay, so 0146. Mr. DeSanto, how do we address that if the wrong policy was?
I can change the record.
Well, let, we have to, Mr. DeSanto?
It's, it's the policy that restricts board member access to schools. Mrs. Cottisbody, what did the number say on that one I gave?
It's 0146.
Okay.
But I think in, in there it was 0146.
45.
Confirming that those that voted against?
Mike.
Administratively, we can correct that vote by getting from the five people that voted that they were clearly voting for 0146, as Mr. Medio pointed out. I thought, I thought you said it was, oh, it wasn't, oh, the one that wa, it wasn't voted down. All right, for clarification, then, the two that voted against 0145 really intended to vote against 0146. So the minute should be corrected to reflect that clerical, that, that error. It's an inadvertent error, for sure.
I wanted to make sure we clarified that before we left this evening. Thank you. Another item, uh, I want, I wanna congratulate, um, the administrative team for the work that they've been diligently, you know, cracking and working and getting so many different projects together between budget development, strategic planning that we're gonna launch soon, and a lot of the work that we've planned out for the rest of the year. Mr. Frye, Dr. Sneven are leading a team of district administrators, uh, at the end of this month, some of them are in this room, who are, will be participating with Legal One NJPSA, uh, and they will all become certified in Code of Conduct's disciplinary procedures. So it's a four-day, four days, right? Four days, three days? Three days of training, uh, with David Nash, Legal One, and we will have a, a large group of, uh, certified, uh, assistant principals, principals, supervisors, assistant superintendents, and Teri Godluski, and her supervisory team as well. Uh, the, the, the reason for that is we are preparing to look, as we always do, at our Code of Conduct, uh, every year, this will be the third version that we prepare. That team will be getting trained, they'll get certified, and then we'll have a K-5 team that's looking at the elementary, a secondary team looking at the secondary level. So, uh, Mr. Medio, uh, provided us with this, um, one-pager, we will be looking at all policies that apply to, uh, discipline, right? The board provides policy, administration develops regulations on how to enact those policies. So we will review at policy and personnel, that'll be one of the other items that we'll have to add, is the district's policy on discipline, if it needs to be updated at all, and then our committee will come together and work with the different stakeholders to develop the regulation and how we administer those different policies, specifically the Code of Conduct. So that's a project that we started, we put a timeline together, a tentative timeline, where a lot of the major work happened in this summer to prepare for next September. So, thank you for bringing it up, it's something that we've been working on, and we're planning around as well, so we're on the same page. Um, I wanna thank everyone for their participation, a quick restart to the school year, uh, Happy New Year to everyone, congratulations to all of our board members for being out and, uh, being here, present. Uh, this is, uh, uh, difficult work, and we have a lot of challenging times ahead of us in, in terms of the work that we have to do, but it will be very rewarding, the end result, so I wanna thank you for opportunity to serve.
I'd like to thank my fellow board members for entrusting the presidency on me. Um, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Holmes for becoming my vice president. I'd like to welcome Mr. Bono, I'm looking forward to working with you. Welcome back, Mr. Medio. I've worked with you before, so I'm looking forward to that. Welcome back, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Rivera. I do have the sentiment that I'm gonna put Mr. Rivera last, speaking from everybody from now on, because he is so heartfelt. But I am so proud of this board, I'm really looking forward to working with them, I'm looking forward to working with the superintendent, the administrative staff, and especially our stakeholders, along with our teachers and our entire staff. So I believe, you know, with this team, we can move this district forward, and I'm really looking forward to, happy, happy, happy anniversary, Happy New Year, um, and God bless you all, have a great night.
Do I have a motion to close, adjourn?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.